And I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting of the City of Bloomington Township to order. If everyone could stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Trustee Mathie.
Yo.
Trustee Bowlin.
Here.
Trustee Montney.
Here.
Trustee Ime.
Present.
Trustee Becker.
Here.
Trustee Urban.
Here.
Trustee Ward.
Here.
Trustee Crable.
Here.
Trustee Crumpler.
Here.
Trustee Miller One Way.
Here. Next item on the agenda is a consent agenda. Is there any item that anybody would like to have removed? Okay, seeing none. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion to approve.
Motion by trustee Bowlin, second by trustee Becker, and if you could go ahead and vote. Okay, the consent agenda passes. There are no names to announce. Our next item on the agenda is a public notice of 2022 meetings for the City of Bloomington Township and Evergreen Memorial Cemetery. And the recommendation is that 22 annual list of meetings be accepted. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by trustee Bowlin, second by trustee Montney. I'm assuming no discussion. So if you guys could go ahead and vote. Okay, great. The item passes. Next item on the agenda. And there are no names to announce. So next item on the agenda is item six, 2021 tax levy ordinance for tax year 2022 to be used in fiscal year 2023. And the recommendation is that the 2021 tax levy be approved and the ordinance pass. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion by trustee Crumpler. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by trustee Ime. Discussion. Okay, seeing none. Go ahead.
Could you remind me, is the tax levy flat? That's what I remember. Okay, thank you.
Okay. No other discussion. If you could please go ahead and vote. Okay, the item passes. There are no names to announce. Next item on the agenda is reports by elected officials, starting with township supervisor, Deb Skerritt.
Thank you. I just wanted to inform you about parking lot improvements. There's been a little bit more delay on part of the north parking lot. This the rock that they put in wasn't enough. The heavy trucks were putting rats in it, so it was just still too moist. So they're waiting on a portion of that to be to be finished in the spring, but we do have entryway from the north side through the south side entrances. And we have our handicap parking spaces back, so that's a good thing for the wintertime. So that the change order was approved by me. It was under the 20,000, so I authorized that to take place. Payment for what has been accomplished so far will be presented at the next meeting. It's going to be somewhere around 87,000. I did get an informal payment request, but it hadn't been formalized in time for the board packet now, so it'll be in the board packet next month. That's all I have.
Any questions for supervisor Skerritt? Okay, trustee Crable?
Thank you. Hi, Deb. We talked earlier today, and I thought it'd be good just to kind of have you explain to the entire trustees the how the SERP money is starting to be used now, what the limits are, how it coordinates with rent and emergency aid assistance and kind of how the word is getting out about the program and working with with other agencies.
Sure, I'd be glad to. Thank you for reminding me, Jeff. The SERP program has started being used November 1. Liheep, Liwap. The funds weren't coming in for the water assistance, and there were disconnects. Disconnects and almost disconnected for many people. And so we started receiving all of those requests for assistance. So we pieced a lot of it together with our EAGA, General Assistance Emergency Assistance, with the SERP to be able to fulfill a lot of those pledges so that they could get their water back on. I worked with city manager Gleason to allow for whenever anybody is in a complete disconnect to actually receive our pledges for that. The city had been receiving pledges if somebody wasn't in disconnect, but it was causing a problem for people to get their water turned back on without receiving the disconnects for somebody who's been disconnected or not receiving our pledges. So we've got that all worked out, and it's it's helping to get the water turned back on a lot faster for individuals who wait a little too long to get our assistance and our help. They wait sometimes for the disconnects, but we're getting them turned on as soon as we can. Now, the SERP program is now not going to be used for water for a little while because the monies came in for the Liwap, which is the low income assistance for water specifically, and that's funds that had been split from the the energy assistance. They've added more funds for specifically water. That monies just came into the to Tazwood Community Services, so we're working with them. If there's a delay in getting those that assistance from them, then we'll use the SERP. And we'll work, we are working directly with them to make this these funds available to the individuals of low income. And what was the other question? You said to bring up.
Well, with additional aid available through SERP net or other agencies, they know that and they prefer people to you.
Trustee Crable was asking, do we do any advertising? We do not do advertising. We we are referral based, and a lot of agencies, all the agencies we work with know to refer to us. And 211 is the prime example. You know, they're the center of referral base, but the city, the Ameren Utility Companies, Corn Belt, Nycor, Water, everybody knows where to go, which is our assistance. I did want to make note on one thing. In your in your packet, you'll see the statistics for the denials for there's a lot of denials and a lot in process for general assistance. We had a huge uptick in the number of applications that came through this last month. And you see a lot of denials there, but a good percentage of those, pretty much 60% plus percent were referred to the emergency assistance program. In our with our programs, we have to first deny somebody general assistance. It's mandatory to work through and see if they're eligible for general assistance. When they're ineligible for that, they move to emergency assistance to see if they're available. So when you see those denials, the good majority of those are that they're moving on to see if they're eligible for emergency assistance. I want you to know that. The in-process ones, we're waiting on paperwork from people.
Thank you, Deb.
Sounds good. Thank you. Next is township assessor. See you, Scudder.
All the complaints have been filed with the board review, and we're starting to hear hearings, informal hearings at the county for the complaints that were filed, and no decision was made at this time. The count was down again this year. We don't know. There's a lot of talk next year, maybe there'll be an increase or because of the amount of sales that occurred in 2021 and 2020, even though the COVID pandemic hit, there was still an increase in a spike in the number of sales. And the the ratios are very low to the assessments, so we're still anticipating. Well, we're not anticipating. Hopefully, everything moves in a good order and the the amount of complaints continue to decline, but using the three-year average and maintaining the level assessments the Department of Revenue requires, we could see increases in assessments next year, which could cause an increase in complaints.
Thank you. Any questions for township assessor Scudder?
Trustee Crumpler. I'm sorry, I was sort of slow on the draw. I meant to try to get a question for Deb, if that's all right.
Sure.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, back earlier in the in the fall, I brought up the notion that possibly the money that was set aside for COVID could be used, you know, to provide relief for some of the families who had suffered in, you know, water damage and that sort of thing. And you helped me understand that that was not necessarily, you know, something we could do. And I wondered, you know, if since that conversation, if they have any applications to access that fund in the community and if you were able to provide any support for people.
The support we provide is the rent and the utilities. We have not asked individuals if they suffered from the flooding. So I don't have an answer to that. So I'm not sure. I believe that most of our increase from the last month has been because of moratoriums being lifted and disconnects going out.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I think at this point, a public comment. Okay, trustee Bowlin.
Yeah, I have a question about the tax assessment. Many of the houses, like you said, lots of selling, and many of them are selling above asking price. If that is what you're talking about as far as affecting next year's assessment.
Well, the assessments are measured, are in place, and we measure the assessments to the sale prices that are coming through over the three-year period, and we make adjustments to that. So then typically appraiser, our assessments are close to market already, very close within a small percentage. So when they're getting higher sales prices than asking price, which is probably above the assessment value, where we're saying we're seeing a lot of low ratios. So that means the prices are a lot higher than the assessments, where we'll have to make adjustments upward to get the assessments to where the sales prices are in an area, so that could cause an increase in the
I just wanted to clarify in my head. Thank you.
Yeah, sounds good. Any other questions other than public comment? Any public comment?
There was no public comment submitted.
Okay, sounds good. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion to adjourn.
Trustee Bowlin, second. Anybody? Trustee Becker. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned, and we will see you in about 10, 15 minutes.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, could you please go ahead and call the roll?
Councilmember Mathie.
Here.
Councilmember Bowlin.
Here.
Councilmember Montney.
Here.
Councilmember Ime.
Present.
Councilmember Becker.
Here.
Councilmember Urban.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Crable.
Here.
Councilmember Crumpler.
Here.
Mayor Miller One Way.
Here. Next item on the agenda, under recognition appointments. We do have a proclamation recognizing diabetes awareness month. And I do believe we have someone here to, Rachel, okay, come on up. Just stand right there at the podium. Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and read this and then give you a chance to say a few words, okay? All right. Where whereas more than 34 million Americans live Whereas more than 34 million Americans live with diabetes, a serious chronic disease, which is the seventh leading cause of death in the United States. And whereas generally individuals are either diagnosed with type one diabetes, an autoimmune disease in which a person's pancreas stops producing insulin, type two diabetes, an impairment of the body's ability to use insulin, or gestational diabetes, which can develop during pregnancy. Whereas approximately one quarter of Americans who have diabetes are unaware that they have the disease. Symptoms can be so mild that they go unnoticed or are mistaken for a different issue. And whereas symptoms can include unexplained weight loss, feeling very thirsty, frequent urination, constant hunger, extreme fatigue, blurry vision, and other eye problems, cuts and bruises that are slow to heal, and cramping, tingling, pain or numbness in hands and/or feet. And whereas undiagnosed or untreated diabetes can cause damage to the heart, eyes, kidneys, limbs, and include other devastating complications, including loss of life. And whereas many organizations support diabetes research and development in order to find a cure, including the Juvenile Diabetes Research Foundation. JDRF is the leading global organization dedicated to type one diabetes research and improving the lives of those living with the disease today. And whereas because of the tireless and monumental efforts of JDRF and other organizations like it, community awareness has increased, lifesaving research has flourished, and advocacy efforts for those who live with diabetes have been given the support and resources necessary to improve their lives. And whereas an increase in community awareness of symptoms related to diabetes can improve the likelihood that people with diabetes will get the attention they need before suffering devastating complications of the disease. Now therefore, I, Boca Malamboi, Mayor of Bloomington, Illinois, do hereby proclaim November 2021 as Diabetes Awareness Month and call upon each of us to remember and support those in our community and beyond living with this disease. Thank you. So now, Rachel, would you like to say a few words?
I would. Thank you. Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, council members and staff. And I want to say a special thank you to Alderman Crable and Amy Overton in the Administration Department for helping to make this proclamation happen. My name is Rachel Lund and I have type one diabetes. In honor of Diabetes Awareness Month, I would like to share my story with you in order to raise awareness within our community of the symptoms of diabetes so that you know what to look for. Hopefully you can catch it and begin treatment before any irreversible harm is done. About four years ago, my eyes became so dry one day that I could not keep contacts in for more than a few minutes. I had no idea this was an early symptom of diabetes. My eye doctor even missed it. He told me it was dry eye and just gave me some drops. A year later, I visited my regular doctor for a checkup when they noticed that my glucose levels were elevated. The doctor asked me if I ever had a problem with diabetes, and I assume he meant in my family history because I was an athlete and I ate a healthy diet. Unfortunately, blood work confirmed that my glucose was in the diabetic range. I had no idea what diabetes was. I didn't understand what the doctor was telling me, and I didn't know what to do about it. Instead of getting treatment, I ignored the issue altogether because I didn't feel sick. Little did I know I was already experiencing symptoms. I ignored my diabetes for a year and a half until I began experiencing more severe symptoms such as extreme thirst, cramping in my feet and legs, and weight loss. I dropped down to 115 pounds, which is the smallest I've ever weighed in my adult life. These symptoms convinced me to see a doctor again. Testing showed that my glucose numbers had more than doubled and my A1C was literally off the chart. I was officially diagnosed with type one diabetes in December of 2019, and I came to terms with the fact that my life would forever be changed. If you suspect that you or a loved one might have diabetes, please contact your medical provider. If you are diagnosed with any type of diabetes, please take it seriously and begin treatment as soon as possible. There is no shame in having diabetes, and you don't have to go through it alone. There are support groups right here in Bloomington Normal that you can join by searching online or social media. I would like to thank everyone that showed up wearing blue in support of Diabetes Awareness Month, not only for being here tonight, but for supporting me in my journey with diabetes. So thank you all very, very much.
Thank you very much, Rachel. Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have public comment?
We do. We did not receive any emailed public comment, but we have seven people in person and one virtual.
Okay, sounds good. Public comment is an opportunity for speakers to provide their views and feedback to the city council. It is also an opportunity for the city council to listen and hear diverse points of view. To maximize the impact of public comments and show respect for the expression of all views, speakers should maintain civility and focus on city issues. Speakers must identify themselves for the record, but are not required to give their address. Each speaker is given the floor for three minutes, and the council does not respond or engage in debate. Any speaker that engages in threatening or disorderly behavior will be deemed out of order and their time ceased. Okay?
We'll first start with Jackie Byer, who is virtual online. Jackie, if you can hear us, if you can press star six to unmute yourself.
Yes, I've unmuted. Can you hear me?
We can't.
You can't hear me?
We can. Sorry. Thank you. You may be, you may begin when you're ready. And if you're speaking, you're still muted.
Okay.
There we go.
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure that, because you said that there was no emails, but there, I did send an email to older persons as well as an email to public comment that was yesterday, just as kind of a CC. But in terms of my verbal public comment tonight, I'm Jackie Byer, and good evening. To summarize the email that I sent, McLean County ranked 73 out of 3,143 counties in the entire US for highest property tax rates, which seemed to indicate a level of fiscal irresponsibility with spending priorities, management, and efficiency within our budget. The 2021 proposed levy for the fiscal year 2023 budget shows a proposed library levy increase of 23.15% with a 20.4% tax rate increase. The combined city and library proposed levy increase is 5.7% with a 3.34% overall tax rate increase. I do not consider that modest. The annual 1.1 million dollar expansion levy will be with us for 20 years. In 20 years, our library will be obsolete. The library is expecting to receive 1.75 million dollars from donations for this project. To date, only $22,000 in donations have been received. If they don't receive the expected donations, will they come back to the taxpayers for that amount? Alderman Crable basically said that we need the library to reduce poverty and crime. If approved, I'd like to see metrics that measure high-risk utilization and any reduction in crime and poverty directly related to the library. Alderwoman Ward basically said that without this expansion, some people will be marked out of having, from having knowledge, books, and access to information. In what way have people been marked out of the library as it is? The so-called rich, powerful, and elite middle-class residents of Bloomington already provide equal access to the public library for all income levels through disproportionate financial funding because of the property tax structure. If there has been any equity in knowledge, learning, and participation in library services over the years that is on the individuals who have chosen not to utilize the public library, it is not a systemic equity issue that needs to be remedied. The real issue is the so-called rich and elite are more than satisfied with the Chevrolet version of the library, while the people who provide little or no library funding want the Cadillac version. In terms of developing reading and critical thinking skills, those skills are primarily developed in another disproportionately funded entity, public schools. And Unit Five is planning on asking the taxpayers for more money. For access to technology, there is now an overlap in terms of taxpayers providing access to those who may not be able to afford it. In addition to providing computer and internet access through our local property taxes for the library and public schools, taxpayers are also disproportionately funding internet access and computer equipment at federal level through the FCC Emergency Broadband Benefits Program introduced because of COVID. It is now being replaced with the new long-term $14 billion Affordable Connectivity Program. But at least with federal tax dollars, they ain't clung bunny from the truly rich and elite, except billionaire Pritzker, who has $35 million to put towards his campaign, but only reported $5.2 million in taxable income. He definitely is not paying his fair share. But this needs to be a referendum item and not a nine-person vote. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jackie. Next?
Next up, we have Mark Gerdler. And then to follow, we'll have Janay Clark.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Mark Gerdler. First of all, what a crybaby. Of course, people who make more money should pay more into the system. That's just a given. I'm here because mainly, you know, a mayor is not a king. Bloomington is not your private Camelot. Your attempts to censor speech here, to oppress speech here, your civility rules, I've seen those instituted in other municipalities, they don't work. You can tell people what they should say, what you would like them to say, but ultimately, you have very little control over what they can say. You do not have to be civil. I've seen many rulings from the Public Access Counselor's Office that you do not have to be civil. But it's not owed to you to be, and even to be respectful. Even cursing, personal attacks are covered under protected, under protected speech. You're also telling people they need to keep it according to city business. No, they don't. They don't have to. Again, the Public Access Counselor's Office has ruled, people can use their three minutes to sing to you, read poetry to you, read love stories to you, do an interpretive dance, whatever they want to do. Your attempts to, let's be real, intimidate people who don't agree with you, to try to keep them from coming here and being able to express their feelings, has not only upset people on, you know, on the left, but you've come under scrutiny for it from people on the right as well, who don't want to see their viewpoints treated that way. So I would just ask you to remember that every time you interrupt someone, every time you tell someone what they can and cannot say, you open the city of Bloomington to costly litigation. And I don't say that from a potential perspective. I can tell you firsthand, public bodies have spent tens of thousands of dollars in decatur for doing what you're doing, trying to censor speech. Whether, every time you do that, we can submit an appeal, or whoever can support, can submit an appeal and fight that, and you will lose. Now, you, we may have to challenge your rules to get them struck down, but they will be struck down, and it's very costly to do so. Again, just talk to your city attorney about that. And I've got a FOIA request and to see all of your open meeting acts guidelines. And based on your behavior, I don't think you actually did any of the test work. I also want to say to the people who said after the meeting last time that people came up here and begged to be taxed, that's not what it was. No one came up and begged to be taxed. You heard from people who said, "I'm willing to go without a couple cups of coffee so that everyone can have a better library," or that everyone can have a better society. These are people who care about people, want people to be housed, want people to have food, want people to have their basic needs met, and they're worried about paying an extra $2 a month. It's ridiculous. They also said that the socialists were down here. I didn't see a single socialist. Socialist carry a rose, we carry the hammer and sickle. We're communists, and I can only speak for myself and quote the good book, but I became a communist to eat the rich and to fuck forever. Thank you.
Next up, we have Janay, yep, sorry, Janay Clark, and then to follow, Serena Fish.
Tess. So I'm just up here to give you some things to think about. First thing, before we worry about the roads, the job of the city would be to worry about the people who are unhoused and sleeping on those streets. So I'm gonna give you examples of what your priority should be, and it should be helping people from the bottom up. That's not what you've been doing. Just for example, when you look at approving a new park over on the east side, make sure that everything's in good repair over on the west side. You know why? Because kids over there, they might not even have a yard, let alone their parents have the funds to have their own playground in their backyard. And if you've ever been to Miller Park, and I'm speaking to the urban, it does have nice equipment now, but there are so many kids that it's, they could use more. And there's a lot of space for it. I guess the rest of the time, I just want you to consider, you know, when you make votes, who you are representing. And you should be representing the most disadvantaged people in this community. So I'm just gonna let, give the rest of my time for you to think about that. Especially you, Donna. Especially you, Sheila. Sorry, I forgot your name. You're the guy that's connected to the local racist. What's your name, Becker? Think about it. Man, it's a long minute and a half. Communism will win.
Okay, next?
Next up, we have Serena Fish, and then to follow will be Matthew Tascow.
Good evening. I'm sorry to break the flow. However, I'd like to stand up here and say, I, as head of West Side Neighbors, I have to work with a lot of people who need help, have a question. Where do I go? Who do I see? And I have to give you kudos as a city for the new hub. I know it's still a work in progress, but thank you, because it's really made my life better. The other thing I'd like to say is thank you for your Public Works Department. It seems like it's just one big job after another right now, or the leaves. And they're doing an excellent job of it. The last thing I'd like to talk about is the library. It is a contentious thing when those of us who own property are looking at one more rate increase in property tax. Whether we choose to want to do it or not to do it, and I'm not going to make that decision for you, and I'm not going to tell you what my decision is, but what I would really like, and what I'm getting from many, many, many community members, is to please put the library decision on either a ballot initiative on either a ballot initiative or referendum and let this community vote on it. And then when the vote is over, do it. Thank you very much for your time. Great job.
Thank you, Serena. Next?
Next up is Matthew Tosco, and then to follow, Gary Lambert.
Hello, I'm Matt. I'm speaking here tonight as a member of the Bloomington Normal Communist Party Club. Get right to it. We demand that the city of Bloomington use whatever funds necessary from the thirteen point four million dollar American Rescue Plan to make all businesses in the downtown Bloomington area wheelchair accessible via permanent structure modification. No more requesting temporary ramps from employees. Furthermore, that the city of Bloomington pay for the upgrades in full through the American Rescue Plan so as to cut out lengthy red tape and possibly litigious shared responsibilities with property owners. A five hundred dollar a week beyond when construction is set to begin penalty should be levied on any property owner, not tenant businesses, but the owners of the properties who refuse the physical modification per wheelchair accessibility. Beyond that, here's what I got for this illegitimate body. We're going to make this capitalist shit show entertaining enough that you fucking tools can't conduct your business-first pantomime of representative democracy, free from the kind of scrutiny and outrage that Maboka's weak pleas for civility stands solely to insulate your bourgeois asses from. My name, I'm not sure if it reflects worse on you or your electoral fans that you went door-to-door spouting QAnon conspiracies on the election trail. I'm sure that crux falls on whether you actually believe that crap or whether you were deliberately blowing smoke up folks' asses to get those Volks and that big cop money, which you, of course, shared with that lump Becker there. Either way, it's gross, and it says a lot about you and those who voted for you. Speaking of cop money, it's disgusting and embarrassing how much this town is offering to fill its ranks. I saw a statistic the other day that said fifty-six percent of cops wish they'd never joined the force. To anyone thinking of applying for that cushy salary, I would advise that you, I would advise you that selling out and becoming that low of a class traitor just isn't worth it. Much like with our military poverty draft, you don't see wealthy kids lining up to do it, because it really does suck that bad. You won't be making a difference. Nothing altruistic can come from it. All you'll be doing is standing in the way of progress, defunding the police, and moving those funds towards better ways to handle the community's issues. Don't do it. Don't become a cop. Formous regards. Thank you.
Next?
Next up, we have Gary Lambert, and then to follow, Scott Steinman and Peggy Wade.
Good evening. I am Gary Lambert. I was driving in this evening, coming down East Washington Street. I believe we have a city ordinance about raking leaves into the streets. I saw piles of leaves, one after another, some as tall as I am, out in the street. I don't see it in other parts of town, maybe I'm not going to the right places, but if we've got an ordinance against it, enforce it. Some time ago, I believe it was maybe the spring of twenty eighteen, my memory's not what it ought to be, Mr., I'm bad with names, Ketzloff, gave a pro forma business plan for the concession stand. At that time, there was some discussion on if approved, where that money would come from. In February of twenty twenty, I went through my councilman, Mr. Olombi, and he forwarded on to Jay and asked him what the status of that was. And I got a very nice letter back from, from Jay. And, I don't have much spectacles. He did clarify the source of the funding. Said the city paid half out of the fund reserve, and the rest is a loan out of the park dedication that will be paid back as funds come in. Well, it's been nearly two years since that time. At his convenience, or the accounting department's convenience, I'd like to see a report or summary accountability as to how the concession stand is performing compared to what the pro forma business plan was. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Next up, we have Scott Steinman, and then our last will be Peggy Wade.
Scott Steinman, Ward Five. I do have a very grave concern about the leaves in the street. They're to be raked to the edge of the, on the grass, the, and they are intentionally, they're invariably in the street. You know, I don't know, maybe it's gonna, I'd suggest the city, if they're going to enforce this, to go out and start issuing citations. Maybe that's what it would take. But you'd see people, a few people that will have them on the parkway, but the majority of them have them in the street. The sidewalks in this town are absolutely pathetic. I've seen the people, I saw one person with a walker with their disabled granddaughter, and they went out and tried the streets, and the streets were worse, and they just turned around and went back. That speaks real well for the city, doesn't it? The, the storm inlets are sunk so low that you have to really bend down and to try to clean those suckers out. I just called the city and let them clean them out. I'm not going to go toppling on my head. And I think that speaks very poorly for the city of Bloomington. I really do. I guess basically, you know, we cannot control the Fleetwood Drive being a steep hill. We get a bunch of rain, and that water comes rushing right down the road. It plugs up the drain, the inlet in front of my place, and the two across the street plugs them up, and the street's flooded. That does not speak well for the city. It really doesn't.
Thank you, Scott. Next?
Last up, we have Peggy Wade.
Hi, my name is Peggy Wade, and I've, I'm against the property tax because I feel that it will affect all the renters too. And I jotted a, my story, and I'd like to read it. My mom and dad were high school graduate, graduates who never made a lot of money. They had four kids and lived in a rental house. Not until just this year, while vacationing with my brother, did I find out that we had to move from one house because of back rent they couldn't pay. It broke my heart that they had to do that, and they had that humiliation and struggle. They finally were able to buy a house for nineteen thousand dollars. By this time, they were fifty-five and fifty-three, and the bank only gave them a fifteen-year loan because of their age. The loan was paid, and they became homeowners. My experience with rent was always a struggle, but the rent was the first bill I paid. I moved to Bloomington in nineteen eighty-seven and secured an apartment. I had to hold out one half of the rent from each paycheck to pay it. Had I not done that, it would have taken one full paycheck with nothing left. I was paid every two weeks. I was also a GTE Verizon Union employee who was paid well above the minimum wage. I have been a renter, a homeowner now, and I also had a home that I rented out, but later sold. So I have experienced each issue. The bottom line is that not only will this affect homeowners that live in their homes, but landlords will pass this expense on to their renters. And there are people with low incomes that own houses. They may not be the type of house you or I might live in, but they are, they're homes, and their taxes will go up. I have always thought, and have always said, that rents are too high. If they were reasonable, people would have a chance of getting ahead financially. And this is why I am against a property tax hike. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Peggy.
That's all of our public comment.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there any item on the consent agenda that anybody would like to have removed? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to-
Motion by Councilmember Bowlin, second by Councilmember Emick. If you please go ahead and vote. Okay, thank you. The item, the consent agenda passes, there are no nays to announce. Next item on the agenda is, moving on to the regular agenda now, a presentation of the FY twenty twenty-one Comprehensive Annual Financial Report as audited and delivered by the audit firm of Baker Tilly, Furchow, and Kraus, as requested by the Finance Department. And I'm going to turn it over to City Manager Gleason for some introductory comments.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We do this every year. It's a quick snapshot, but it's an important one. Both agenda, regular agenda items tonight are going to be Finance Director Scott Rath, and running the lead. Scott?
Thank you, City Manager Gleason. The FY twenty-one audit was finalized on October twenty-second. We posted it to the website. We published it on October twenty-seventh. It's a very intensive six-month process. It incorporates a lot of different data from different sources. Library Foundation Audit, Zoological Society Audit, Pension Funds are audited, and some of these are done by different firms. So it's, it's really the, the integration, incorporation of a lot of different data. The, the audit firm of Baker Tilly is central to that process, obviously finalizing and processing the audit for the entire city. This is the sixth year that Baker Tilly has performed our audit. We have a very strong relationship with them. Very professional process that we go through, and we appreciate their services. So at this time, I'd like to introduce the partner with Baker Tilly, Mr. Jason Coyle.
All right, thanks, Scott. Yeah, it's good to be with you. Scott said, Jason Coyle with Baker Tilly. I'm just going to go over a few highlights of your financial statements and then our communication letter, and we have some selected pages from your financial statements that we're going to go through. I do want to thank Scott and his team for helping us through the audit. As he mentioned, it's a, it's a bit of a process, and I know Scott and his team have a day job, and then we, we come in either physically or virtually the last couple of years and ask for a lot of information to validate your financial information, and so it's a, quite a lift that they have to undertake on top of their routine duties. So appreciate all the assistance from Scott and his team. So you do issue a comprehensive annual financial report, and as the name implies, the financial statements are more comprehensive than you're actually required to file. So I always like to congratulate communities on doing that. You're providing more transparency of your operations to those who might be using your financial statements, whether that be yourself or the public. The name is changing. The Governmental Accounting Standards Board just issued a new statement that's changing it to Annual Comprehensive Annual Financial Report in the future, so just moving the, the words around, but you'll see a slight change beginning next year. As we get into the meat of the financial statements, on the next page is our opinion. And so of this hundred and seventy-five-page document, three pages in here come from our firm, and that's, that's what's called the Independent Audit's Report or the Opinion. In layman's terms, what this is, is that it's our opinion on your financial information. That means somebody could pick up the financial information, rely on it in all material respects, as they evaluate the financial health of the city. So that's basically what the opinion says. The opinion does call out the fact that our firm did not audit the Police Pension Fund or the Zoological Society. Nonetheless, the financial information of those organizations are incorporated into this, into this larger document, and we make reference to that in our opinion. After our opinion is a section called MDNA, which stands for Management's Discussion Analysis. And I always encourage all governing body members to at least take a time to read through the MDNA. Not everyone, I understand, wants to read through a hundred and seventy-five pages of a financial statement, but the, the Management's Discussion Analysis is kind of a snapshot of what went on during the year, kind of some summarization that compares the current year to the prior year. There's some nice charts and things in there that make it a little easier to read, too. So again, if you read nothing else, I would encourage you to take the time to at least read through that document. And it is written by management, although we, we do review it, and Scott and his team does a great job of putting that together. After the MDNA, we kind of get into the meat of the financial statements, if you will. The first one being your statement of net position. And you can see on here, there's a couple of component units, the Library Foundation, the Zoological Society, and then there's a few other columns, one being your governmental activities and your business-type activities. Those are the primary components of the, the city. The biggest thing I like to point out on this statement relates to your pension liabilities. Those aren't things that are talked about on a month-to-month basis, but they are incorporated into this statement in your financial statement. So you have three pension funds, as you're probably aware, IMRF, your police pension, and your firefighters' pension. And when we look at those liabilities that are incorporated on here, along with the related deferrals that are related to it, we saw a nice reduction in the net pension liability for the year, to the tune of over thirty million dollars from last year to this year. So that, that's helpful to you as those liabilities go down. That's driven, as you can probably guess, quite largely by the stock market increasing in the last year. And so those returns help reduce that net pension liability. So that's a great position to be in, and we could, we'll all just continue to hope that the stock market has some great returns as we move through the year. You are continuing to fund those pensions according to the required contributions on top of the great returns. So you're doing quite a bit to continuing to bring down those net pension liabilities. Moving on to the next financial statement I want to talk about is the, there we go, the statement of revenues and expenditures and changes in fund balance of your governmental funds. These are most likely the funds you're a little bit more used to seeing on a regular basis. So you have your general fund. That first column is your primary operating fund. And then there's the Library, the Debt Service, and on the next page is what we call the non-major funds, which is where all of your smaller funds are incorporated in there. So the, the big thing to point out here in your government, in your general fund, excuse me, so an increase in fund balances in your general fund by one point nine million dollars for the year. Yeah, it's just back one page there. So that, that's great to see an increase in your primary operating fund by almost two million dollars for the year. You know, one of the ratios I always like to look at is comparing your total expenditures to your fund balance, and what is that percentage? And so if we look at total fund balance, that percentage is thirty-eight point eight percent. If we just look at unassigned fund balance, so there's different components of fund balance, some being restricted and, and assigned. If we just look at unassigned fund balance, you're at about thirty percent. So if you just look at unassigned fund balance, you could go approximately a third of a year without any revenue coming in and be able to continue to fund your operations. Not that you'd ever want that to happen, you know, but if there was a slowdown in revenue coming in, you'd still have same ability to continue to pay your obligations. You know, overall, your governmental funds on the next page here increased seven point three million dollars. So a good increase in your fund balances for the year. Going on to the next page then is your, what we call your proprietary funds. These are the funds that are meant to be self-sustaining without the use of property taxes. And the caveat on this one is your arena is supported a little bit by sales taxes. The rest of them are just supported by charges for services. All of these saw an increase in fund balance for the year, which means, at least at the current moment- which means, at least at the current moment, the charges for services in these funds is meeting or exceeding your current expenditure for the year. So you know, that's a good position to be in. It doesn't plan for future infrastructure needs and things like that. But right now, the charges for services are covering your operating expenses. And then the last statement I'll go over is your pension statement. Put one down, one more. So this is, you see that far right column there, your pension trust funds. This is your police and firefighters' funds only. You could see quite an increase in net investment income there for the year, which overall drove quite a healthy increase in the net pension or the pension trust funds by $51.1 million for the year. Again, at the end of last year, the stock market was not in a very good position at the end of 43020, I should say, because we just entered into the pandemic. And so the stock market went down, and you saw quite a great recovery then in the one year going on 43021. And that's all I want to talk about as it relates to your financial statements. We do complete a single audit for the city. This relates to federal funding that you receive. We had one major program, not surprising, the Coronavirus Relief Fund, which was additional money you got. Happy to say that with the testing we did there, we didn't have any findings. So we test that for compliance and internal controls related to following the federal rules. And again, happy to say no findings there. The other document that we prepare at the conclusion of the audit is our communication letter. The big point in that letter is the fact that we didn't have any recommendations for internal control improvements. In prior years, we'd had a couple of recommendations for improvement related to utility billings and also the controls at the arena. Both of those, happy to say, were able to remove as recommendations. Utility billings was removed largely related to new software that you implemented. And then the arena operations, you took in-house versus having them outsourced, and that greatly improved the controls around the financial operations of the arena. So, you know, nice to see that improvement from last year to this year, and congratulations to yourself and Scott on making those changes to your operations. So, and that's the end of my prepared remarks. If you have any questions, though, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions from Council? Okay, it looks like you're crystal clear. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good to be with you.
Thank you. Okay. Our next item on the agenda is item 8B, Consideration Action to Approve the 2021 Tax Levy Estimate for the City of Bloomington and the Bloomington Public Library as requested by the Finance Department. And I'm going to turn it over to City Manager Gleason for some introductory comments.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. No additional comments. Scott, I'm going to turn the floor to you.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, City Manager. Tonight, we'll be reviewing and hopefully adopting the estimated property tax for the FY 23 budget year. This is referred to as the 2021 property tax. That is a calendar year. The taxes that we're looking at right now with the valuations, it'll be finalized for the end of the year. According to state statute, we have to adopt, prior to the end of the year, we have to submit to the county clerk our final adopted levy by the last working Tuesday of the year. So that's the 28th of this year. So we have to do the estimate at least 20 days prior to the final adoption. So this is the beginning of that process. And this is also really the first official action related to the FY 23 budget. So it said, the adoption of the levies on the front end of the budget, because we're just in the very preliminary pages, but this is the first official, first step of that budget process. So next slide, please. So just to kind of review some of the basics of the tax levy. The levy is really the amount of dollars that we're requesting via the property tax. And then that is taken against the EAV, the equalized assessed value, and that really determines the rate. So the rate doesn't drive the levy, the levy drives the rate. So just wanted to make that clear from a definitional standpoint. The equalized assessed value, really essentially, there's an equalization factor, but it's been one-third of the full value of the property for many, many years. So the math is very simple as far as the property tax bill. Whatever your fully assessed value times a third, times the tax rate then is the amount of property taxes that will be due. So we give an example here. The average house value that's kind of used within the local community is $165,000. So that's why we've kind of selected that amount. So the EAV would be 55,000, one-third of that value. Kind of jumping forward here a little bit, the combined city and Bloomington Public Library rate that we're looking at for this year, the estimate is 1.4008%. So using this example, $165,000 house, it'd be a total tax of $770. Now, I don't have on this exhibit, but I'll just review real quickly. On a $100,000 house, that would be approximately $467,000, excuse me. On a $300,000 house, $1,400. And on a million-dollar, you know, commercial property, that'd be around $4,600, $4,700. Next slide, please. So our equalized assessed value for the area has gone up approximately $42.5 million over the prior year. You can see the history here. So we're looking at a two-and-a-quarter percent increase. So in the last five years, we've averaged, you know, you can see between .32 and the higher end of .73. So I think everyone's fully aware of the market value increases, but we're also hoping that this is a broadening of the tax base, too. We have a lot of building going on in the community. We don't want to, you know, just have a vertical valuation increase where, you know, everyone's property taxes are going up. We're hoping that the valuation is broadening, and I think we are seeing that. Your housing starts are way up, commercial development in the city. The statistics on that are a little difficult to get. I try to look into those as far as the number of parcels. The assessor's office is constantly trying to limit the number, doing combinations, stuff like that. It costs money to track all those. So, you know, we'll try to dive into that a little bit more. But I think, you know, from what we're seeing as far as construction starts and everything like that, we can assume that much of this value increase is a broadening as well as just everyone's value going up. So a two-and-a-quarter percent increase, you're going to see in the following slides, you know, we can stick with our same rate and realize a levy increase, but we're not going to, we're not going to, we're not proposing to go up that full two-and-a-quarter percent because we know, first of all, that that value is going to come down a little bit related to tax appeals and tax exemptions coming in. Next slide, please. So given that two-and-a-quarter percent EAV increase and drawing that down somewhat, you know, approximately, I'm going to, $12 million to kind of account for the historical reduction that we've seen over the last few years related to the appeals process and exemptions, the city is able to realize $275,000 of additional levy dollars related to that EAV increase. So keeping the rate about the same, realizing $275,000. So now that goes to offset the normal cost of living, the CPI increases, you know. So as cost of living or costs go up, we've seen a 5% to 6% increase over the last year. Now, we all know that that is not normal. The normal is between 1% and 2% increase. But as values go up, and the levy can go up slightly every year along with that, it helps offset those inflationary increases. Can't work with the glasses, I'm like with Billy like that. Now, with the library, everyone's familiar that we are going to be showing you a $1.1 million add for the expansion. But we process the EAV increase against the library levy at the front end of the estimate. And for them, with their, with the value increase, they'll be able to realize or capture, I should say, an additional $50,000 to help offset their operations and really holding that rate flat before the expansion addition. Next slide, please. Okay. The library expansion-related increase, $1.1 million. So on a $17 million bond, using the estimates we've received from our financial advisor over 20 years, our estimated bond debt service is $1.1 million. So the tax increase or the addition to the rate is .0538% for that $1.1 million. So with the BPL tax increase, we've given some examples here of the total tax that would be added to the normal and some other examples here. We've publicly proposed the $30 on a $165,000 house, but you can see for a $100,000 house, it'd be $18, $300,000, approximately $54.1 million, approximately $179. Next slide, please. So this is the historical levies that we've adopted over the last five years. I'm going to jump down to the rate section here. You can see for the city rate, we've really tried to maintain that 1.08-ish to 1.09% rate. Now, you can see it started to creep up slightly after 2018, 1.09, 1.0937. So that is why we've kind of reduced the EAV in anticipation of those tax appeals and the exemptions coming in by 11 to 12 million dollars and working with that math. And so that the $275,000 right now is showing an estimated city rate of 1.0838, realizing that when the final value is coming into the year, that EAV that we got from the county is going to come down slightly, and that rate will move up just a little bit, and will still be more at that stable 1.09 range. With the library, it's the same, pretty much the same history. You can see going back to 2017, the .25, 2.6%, very consistent right up to 2020. And then with the 1.1 million, we're moving that up to the .3169%. So the combined rate, a 1.408% increase, or 1.4008%. Next slide, please. This is just a kind of a visual representation of the allocation of how the tax levy dollars are used. There's many components on here where the tax levy does not, does not cover the entire cost of the department or the area. But this is the way that the levy is developed over time. So you can see that 43%, it's 11.6 million, that's for the police and fire. That's a combination of the pensions and a couple of other categories related to just general police adds and fire adds. There was an addition to the fire levy a few years ago related to the potential adding of another ambulance crew. And then we have IMRF, bonds and interest. And then the library is another significant portion at the 6.1 million. Next slide, please. And this is an exhibit that many people are familiar with. It's the allocation of the overlapping taxing districts bodies for the area. So you can see that District 87, if we split this up into a dollar or 100%, is basically 61 cents or, you know, 61% of the total tax bill. And that, these are utilizing last year's numbers, but we've added in the estimate for the city and the library. And it really hasn't moved the city or the library's percentage at all. Kind of just jumping down to the bottom, you can see the city at 13 cents and the library at 3 cents. So the city and the library combined is that 16 cents on the dollar, 16% of the total overlapping tax rate for the area. Next slide, please. So next steps, assuming the adoption of the estimate this evening, since the library is going up 23% on an aggregate tax amount basis, the 1.1 million divided into what they were previously was below 5 million. That's a 23% increase. So the truth in taxation statute requires us to do a public hearing for anything over 5%. So we will do a truth and taxation public hearing on December 6th, and then to target December 13th for the final 21 levy adoption, as well as the abatements. And abatements are really primarily related to our bond ordinances. Whatever we issue a bond, we're basically committing to investors that we will levy, if we have to, the full debt service on all bonds. But we're also allowed to abate those. So essentially, every year, we say, okay, we are abating those taxes, and we're going to cover those debt service utilizing other tax revenues of the city. So we do this every year, and we're presenting the abatements at that time. So recommendation is to adopt the estimated tax levy as proposed. And I'll stop, I know I went really fast for any questions or comments or discussion.
Any questions from Council? Okay, seeing none, is there a question? Okay, Councilmember Ward.
Thank you. Just a couple of questions. Would you be able to go back to the slide with the pie chart that broke down the, yeah, that one? Um, just for the record, can you summarize the boundaries of what property taxes can be used for? I'm trying to get some clarification here for the record.
Well, that's a really good question. I'm not sure there's limitations as to the categories, but the addition to those categories and our additional category would have to be approved by council. Within the council memo, we have the different categories within the city. So we have, you know, police protection, fire protection, parks. You know, there's IMRF or Social Security. So these are things that are adopted over time. But I'm not really familiar with anything that would be exempt from that process.
Okay. That was my only question. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Emig.
I have a follow-up to Elder Woman Ward's question, because I think this is what you're asking, I think. If, is the, the amount of money we pay overall for property tax, how much of that funds our municipality? How much of that total of the property tax goes into the city budget?
So the property tax levy for the city funds about almost 20% of the general fund operations. So, you know, of $110 million, it's a little under 20% of that. And then for the library, it's going to fund probably more like 90% pay of operations, 80, 80, upper 80s, as far as like operating revenues.
On a typical year, that's true. For construction, it will be down to about 68% because we're using fund balance reserves, things like that, that bring up the percentages of the other areas of funding.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, I just, to put it in context, I know that one of the reasons why property taxes are so high in Illinois has to do with the way that our public education is funded overall. And that's shifting a bit, but that has differential impact now on communities and our, the obligation we have for pension payments that went unfunded for so many years. I just, I know that there's a larger context to think about. And looking at this expense is a very small piece of that larger conversation about taxation and what, you know, what systematically might be the problem here.
Thank you. Councilmember Bowlin, and then Councilmember Crumpler.
Yeah, I just, what popped in my head when Elder Woman Ward was talking, property tax, correct me if I'm wrong, is about 12% of our entire budget. So it's, when you look at these percentages in the pie chart, overall entire budget comparison is different, correct?
Yes, but, I mean, the property tax is primarily a general fund revenue source. So usually, you know, we reference it as a component or percentage of the general fund. So that's why I utilize, you know, the, the almost 20% of the 110 million versus, you know, 20 million of the $250 million citywide budget.
Councilmember Crumpler?
Thank you, Mayor. I just would like to make a couple of comments about the public library. And I plan to vote for this request. And a couple of points I made last time, the proposal was revised from 37, the library's proposal was revised from our original 37 to 22 million. And the library is contributing over 5 million of its own savings, which to me indicates fiscal responsibility to manage a more realistic project. I also would like to remind folks of the low interest rate right now. It makes a lot of sense to me to advance it, to invest in our community. And then finally, Councilwoman Emig mentioned last week the changing nature of literacy. Literacy today is multimodal. It includes reading, listening, composing, imagining, doing in ways that were not even possible a decade ago. We must ensure our public library is a 21st century facility, that that facility is equipped with the tools and resources to support the shifting needs of all of our residents of the. to support the shifting needs of all of our residents of this growing community. So, um, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Crebill. And I know we're, I'm trying to keep track of time here. We only have about a couple of minutes in terms of what was allotted.
Thank you, Mayor. Just again, to, to clarify for people. You know, if, if we approve this levy tonight, there will not be any less money for infrastructure. If we reject the levy, there'll be no additional amounts for infrastructure. We, we continue to spend six to eight million on roads a year, a million on sidewalks. And I believe overall, if we talked about when we approved this current year's budget, it was about $60 million that we were spending in infrastructure overall. So I'll just, and one question. When do you expect, if the levy is approved and there is that increase in property tax because of the library? When would you think property owners would see that?
They're going to see that with the, the bills that are issued. Next May-ish, right?
So I know the, you said the bond will issue in the second quarter, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Right. And we, you know, we pre-fund typically, we try to pre-fund the debt service. So, you know, the, the revenues that come in this year, hopefully, you know, it, we'll have to see what the investor environment's like. But timing it, so the, the levy is, it's all set aside in a bond fund. And then it'll, it'll go to pay the first year's debt service, the 1.1 million. So collect it, pay it, collect it, pay it like that.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you, Councilmember Becker.
So real quick, we've heard several people say that this is a small amount. And I'm, I'm speaking specifically to the library right now. And that's fine. It's a small amount. I think everybody knows that I would like to have seen it much smaller. But if you ever heard the phrase death by a thousand paper cuts, that's how the taxpayers feel. There's more and more small amounts that continually add up and add up and add up over time. You know, if I come back to just looking at this, let's say I disagree with the, the library. We still vote to spend it. Fine, spend the 1.1 million, but find somewhere else to take that 1.1 million except the taxpayers. There are at least, I bet you in, in a working session of 40 hours, you could come up with $2 million, $2 million in efficiency savings per year that would pay that bill. That's what I would like to see us do instead of adding on to the tax levy. Let's not go this way. Let's find a way to be more efficient and save even more and put that in as additional to the roads as well. We can spend money. We just can't always spend money without ever looking at the cost cutting side of things.
Okay. I think we're going to, running out of time here. So is there a motion to add maybe another five minutes?
I'll make that motion to add five minutes.
Motion by Councilmember Bowlin. Is there a second? Okay, second by Councilmember Emig and Voiceful.
Yeah, well, just real quick, Councilmember Matthew.
Yes.
Councilmember Bowlin.
Yes.
Councilmember Montney.
Yes.
Councilmember Emig.
Yes.
Councilmember Becker. Councilmember Urban.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Aye.
Councilmember Crable.
Yes.
Councilmember Crumpler.
Yes.
Hey, sounds good. So next is Councilmember Montney, it looks like.
I think.
Oh, okay. That's right. You had your light up.
Well, I'd just like to reiterate that when we talk about, there'd still be money left for the roads. There's still be money left for sidewalks and sewers. That money is not our money. It's money that we're stewarding and asking our community to provide for us. And in light of that, just a couple of comments. First of all, we've had a couple of folks mention this evening going to the public and asking for them to directly participate in prioritizing how their money is spent. Secondly, just reiterating as well, when we've seen in eight years, over 50% increase in spending in the community's budget. Let's find offsetting amounts to take out so that we can keep this neutral and not ask our taxpayers to pay more in their property tax. And because this has been characterized as such an insignificant amount of money that we're asking people to find. I would think that would be something that we should be enthusiastic and capable of doing.
Thank you, Councilmember Bowlin.
I'd like to make a motion to separate the two levies from the city and the library, since they are two separate taxing bodies.
What do you think, Jeff? Can we do that?
Yeah. So I think what you're going to do is first take a, a motion to approve the tax levy estimate for the city. And then there'll be a separate motion to approve the tax levy estimate for the library, correct? Yeah. So I think you can just, if you want to make a motion to approve the city tax levy separate from the library, then that motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the city tax levy.
Okay. And then you have a second by Councilmember Montney? Okay. You have your lights up. Are you wanting to make a comment or are you wanting to vote?
I had a more of a general comment before the motion was made, I was going to say. So I don't know when that's exactly appropriate.
Sure, you can go ahead and make a comment.
Well, I was just going to say, um, you know, we've, we have differing opinions and that, that's perfectly fine on this. One of the things that we did in a council session as we were talking about the budget, and it's probably 2017, maybe even earlier than that, was we, we, we did a budget retreat and we went through every different program that operates in the city. And we talked about what the program was, where the requirement for that program came from and how it was funded. And so, you know, just as kind of a bigger picture, as we're going into budget season for next year. I think maybe that might be a good idea since you and I are the only ones that were elected at that time to kind of do that refresher. Because, you know, I've said this before, I was surprised when we went through every line by line, how many of those programs were required by either federal or state mandate. You know, even programs inside of the fire department or inside of, of, inside of the police department or things of that nature that we were required to do that weren't even optional spending. And so it's just kind of a bigger discussion as we move into next year. That would probably be a good idea to bring, you know, create this. So we have a level setup. These are the facts that we all understand and we can operate from moving forward, right? Just as a, just a thought. So.
Thank you, Councilmember Ward.
I don't know if anybody here has the answer to this question, um, but maybe Mr. Rath than you do. Can anybody tell me roughly what it would cost to have a special referendum?
I have no idea, to be honest.
Anybody know what the last election cost? Might be good to find out before.
I don't know.
Go down that road.
So.
Sure, go ahead.
I just wanted to make a comment. I appreciate Jamie bringing up the opportunity to look at spending. From, from reviewing the programs of the city, I think the opportunity really reflects looking at how we are delivering our work and finding opportunities to improve the cost structure of service delivery without reducing services or programs that are of value to the community. And I do think that would be a wonderful thing to do. And I think that's very much in alignment with one of the initiatives that we put forth for the city manager for this coming year.
Thank you. So we have a motion on the floor and I think we should go ahead and vote. So, and the motion is to approve the levy for the, the city.
Yes, correct. And it's ready electronically.
I'm sorry, just a point of question. Do we not have to vote on whether we're going to split those apart?
No, the motion ended up being just to approve, to take them separate. But the motion was just to approve that the city tax levy first.
Right. And then we'll approve.
And then a motion will be in order, depending on how that goes. Then another motion would be in order for the library portion. Or if that fails, then another motion would be in order.
I'm confused. I thought that, that we were, that, that the item before us was to approve both. And then I thought somebody made a motion to, to take them one at a time.
She originally did, but she, I think she changed the motion to.
Make a motion before.
To, to, to just approve the city tax, to take that first and just approve the, the city tax levy as proposed, the estimate. So depending on how, how that vote goes, then you will go to the library tax levy. I don't know that you need a motion before that to do something. She just, she just went ahead and changed her motion to approve the city tax levy estimate.
And just a reminder that what's listed on the agenda is just a recommended motion. It's not the required motions, but you know, in perfect sense, I guess. And so she first, like Jeff said, made it one motion and then amended it to. So right now we are just considering passing the city levy separately.
All right, go ahead and vote.
Yes, vote through poll unit. Thank you.
Okay, sounds good. The motion passes or no nice one else? Now, is there a motion to?
Yeah, I'm there. I moved that we pass the library estimated levy as presented in the packet.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by trustee Matthew, second by trustee Ward. And if you go ahead and vote, is it set up yet?
Do we have comment? Can we comment before the vote?
Well, you could, but we've already commented a number of times. I mean, do you want to extend the time? Because we have that motion on the floor right now.
The electronic vote's ready when you are.
Okay, I think the item passes 623. Madam Clerk, would you please announce the vote? Denise?
Councilmember Bowlin, Councilmember Becker, Councilmember Montney.
Okay. So the next item on the agenda is our finance director's report. And Scott, you're, it's your show today. You probably didn't sleep all weekend. Oh, that's okay. And I don't know if city manager Glee's, do you have any comments? Okay. So, uh, tonight through October 31st, we are six months through the year. We are in the midst of collecting all the departmental information for the FY23 budget. As part of that, departments are asked to give us their FY22, the current year projections. So I think I mentioned that we may have projections this month, but we're going to push that off. Next month is a short month. You know, we have the two council meetings, December 6th and 13th. So we'll probably have a projection incorporated into these financials for January. So this, this month's reporting is going to be very similar to last month's. Overall, revenues are doing still very well. We still have lingering concerns about supply chain, rising costs, inflation, those kinds of things. But in the meantime, at least revenues are trending very positively. So, next slide, please. Okay. So sticking with kind of the, the new format from last month, you know, I wanted to highlight, you know, we've added in the far right column. It shows what we've taken down, what we took down or adjusted the 22 budget versus 21. Because when you're looking at our variance year to date during the current year, really need to keep, take that in the context of what did we do to the budget going into the year? You know, we, we weren't sure the implications of the lingering effects of COVID. So, um, you know, you can see for home rule, we took that down 6%. That was, you know, roughly 1.3 million, a pretty significant dollar amount. And you can see on down the column there. So for today though, you know, we're just going to highlight food and bear. Took that down almost 13%. And you can see going back over to the left, the year-to-date variance is $462,000. It's 28% over the year-to-date budget. Now, jumping back over to the right, you can see that the last month was 28% over budget. So it's been very consistent through the year, our year-to-date. And our last month out of five months, because we're one month behind, you know, on the recognition of our revenue year is 28%. So we're consistently seeing positive activity out of food and beverage, which I think is a, a very good indication of, of our local economy. Looking, you know, sort of two thirds of the way over in that column, the highlighted, you can see that we're $634,000 ahead of budget versus prior year. So, you know, the impact of COVID can be seen easily right there. Going down one line, highlighted the, the year-to-year comparison for local use tax. I really want to educate council and the public. This is, it's kind of getting into the weeds a little bit, but this legislative change, January 1st, 2021, that leveled the playing field legislation. It, it goes back to 2018, the Supreme Court ruled that states could tax out-of-state online, online retailers for sales tax. That had a pretty, a material impact on us from the get-go. We were seeing those revenues in local use. So local use is basically the base state sales tax, 6.25%. And then they allocate it based on per capita. So, you know, depending on if, if your local economy is better than the other ones, it doesn't matter. It's per capita allocation. So on January 1st, 2021, the law ratcheted up. Online retailers were expected to collect local components of tax. So that, what that meant from an accounting standpoint and a reporting standpoint and how we see the cash, it started coming in, in the form of state sales tax, so up the top of the exhibit and home rule sales tax. So we got the add-on of home rule. And then what was in local use is in state. Now, it's, it's really hard to, to dig through and see the exact numbers. But our feeling in finance is that not only are we realizing the additional home rule, but we're probably realizing a bump because our local economy is stronger than the state in general. So we're receiving our direct state sales tax on purchases made online by our local residents versus that being allocated on a per capita basis down a local use. So home rule and state sales tax, you know, those are significantly over budget for the year. Home rules specifically related to that. Also, you know, the classic examples I've been using the last few months, pent-up demand stimulus, you know, monetary policy, you know, low rates, et cetera. But you can see that local use did come down year over year. So we did take that, I think we kept the budget even actually. Yeah, 0% is right there, but it's come down year over year, which we anticipated. And then jumping to the bottom, hotel and motel. You know, the local construction with Rivian, the, the hotels are, I mean, this, this is just something we, we never would have foreseen. You know, we're 119, 120% over year-to-date, half million dollars over year-to-date. We're half million dollars ahead of prior year, 165% the last month budget to variance. You know, and we took that budget down 45%. So, you know, that, that was a very, very material swing, you know, just from hotel motel. You know, really a line item, we don't watch too much, but it's, it's going to have a pretty material impact on the general fund, just because it's so far over. And it's an indication of what's going on here in our local community with Rivian, et cetera. So, um, very good news, you know, on the revenue side, again, you know, expenditures, the cost, you know, the supply chains, difficulty finding labor. I mean, I, I think we have 30 to 35 openings in the general fund right now. It, it is challenging, but at least from the revenue standpoint, that's good news. Next slide, please. So this is the general fund revenue and expenditure exhibit. As indicated previously in January, we'll add a column where we project the end of the year. So right now, it's really just kind of a, you know, a static snapshot of, of our financials. And we have such seasonality in our financials, you know, it's, it's a little difficult to get an idea from this one because this is just a straight year-to-date. We show the trend. It's hard for us to do a monthly budget, uh, like we do for some of those major tax revenues for some of these expenditure lines. for some of these expenditure lines, like with parks, et cetera, when those programs are going to kick off. So really, we just kind of look at the year-to-year and try to see if there's any indications there, material differences. And most of them, if you run down the variance notes, are really related to COVID. You know, prime example, excuse me, I got too close to the mic, charges for services. You know, we're year-to-date 6.4 million. You know, 49.5% of, of the year. So, and that actually tracks really well with our trends. So we're six months through the year, it's 50%. So that one's really, you know, on, on point right there. But you can see versus last year at this time, we're at 5.3 million. So pretty material difference there. I mean, that was really all related to COVID reductions. So you know, from a, an analysis standpoint, you know, from the finance department, we're looking at these variances year-over-year, where they are to variance. Where they are to trend, see if that's different than last year and trying to determine if we have any issues that are starting to bubble up. But, but nothing so far. Expenditures, all, all tracking really well. You can see salaries at 49.3%. We, you know, we have, I believe, $2 million vacancy savings built into the budget. And, and even with that, we're, we're below the trend and I think that's going to continue given the indications that we're having from departments having a tough time, you know, filling, filling openings. Some of the differences to last month, you know, jumping back up the ARP funds. You know, we had the full 6.7 million dollars in there, but we've reallocated part of those funds to the sewer and storm. So instead of showing those as a transfer and grossing up our activity, we just rebooked that revenue over in a sewer and storm. Those are for the engineering, for the what's the modeling, I can't, hydraulic modeling, drawing a blank right there. And the locust cultural engineering. So that went from six down to 4.7. We talked with the chief accountant, Patty Silva, just thought it'd be better just to rebook that instead of showing it as a transfer out. But down at the bottom of the column, year-to-date actual, we're just showing that full 4.7 is expected use. So kind of taking that out of our projected ending fund balance, which at this point of the year, because of seasonality, it, it's not a great indicator, but we just wanted to capture that as kind of an in and out, given that our expectation is council will come up for, you know, targeted use for those funds. Next slide, please. Enterprise funds. The revenue trend at the bottom, you know, it should be 50%. We're doing, consumption and water is higher. We're, we're doing better across all categories. Again, golf is doing better than the prior year. Councilmember Boland asked about solid waste last, last month. So I just wanted to kind of highlight how we handle, call them encumbrances. You'll hear that word. It's the same as purchase orders. So basically the bid has been approved. If, if it's, you know, over $50,000 council has approved it. It's in, in the system as an encumbrance, as a commitment. So we show that as an expense immediately. So with solid waste, landfill fees, all those things that are contracted at the beginning of the year, we show those expenditures right away. So it's, it's a dip, it's difficult to get a snapshot, given that, that method. So we might have to address how we can kind of show. And maybe we'll come up with a projection for the, for these categories as well going forward to give a little bit more visibility on where the fund is headed. Other than that, that concludes my comments for this evening. So be glad to take any questions.
Councilmember Boland, Montney and Becker.
Well, Scott, thank you so much for all this information. I really appreciate it. I'm not trying to put any kind of negative twist on this. I, I really liked it, our local economy as far as people spending and generating sales tax revenue. But when the comment is made or the figures show that we're ahead of budget. I do, I recall when we did the budget for last year, it was cut back significantly. So how is that related?
Right. And, and that, that, that is why I did, we added that column to the right that shows if we took it up or down versus prior year. I didn't speak to that specifically tonight, but last month, I know I spoke to local motor fuel tax and how we had taken it down. But it's showing over year-to-date. So it's doing, showing better for this budget, but we had taken it down from 21 to 22. If the trend continues as is, it will be at a half million dollars under what it was prior to COVID. So yes, it's, it's a great question. Trying to give some indication as to the comparisons by just putting in that column out to the right. So if you see a 25% over budget year-to-date, but we took it down 15%, that means on a trend basis, you know, we're only really kind of like 10% ahead of where we were prior to COVID.
That's what I was asking. Thank you.
Councilmember Montney.
So would you mind to put on the slide that has the motor vehicle fuel tax amount up there? I believe the slide that shows it to be currently at 4 million. So when we look at that annual budget amount of 4 million. In 2018, the adopted budget amount for motor fuel tax was 9,621,000. And so when I reflect on the current status of our streets and you, you mentioned looking for trends and the opportunity to analyze trends that might emerge from this. That is something that we really need to take a look at and understand because cars are becoming more fuel efficient. We also have vehicles that do not use gasoline where this tax is not applicable and yet they do use our roads. So as we look at having adequate funding for our streets, we know we're behind in that area. And this experience on this line relative to the past seems to be down significantly. Unless I'm misreading the 2018 and earlier documents, so I'll stop there.
That document must have included state motor fuel tax as well. Because we were averaging, I'd say $2.3 million roughly per four cent application of the local motor fuel tax. So the, the math, kind of like in general, when we, when we executed the last local motor fuel tax increase, it was going to be kind of a, a $2.3 million, $2.3 million for local motor fuel tax, four cents. $2.3 million for the next four cents. And then roughly $2.3 million for sales tax, because we get 10, we allocate 10% of the total sales, home rule, sales tax. Still fogging up to asphalt and concrete and that got us to around the $7 million, $7.2 million target. So the document you were looking at must have included state motor fuel tax as well.
So with this, are you saying then that those other funding sources remain available to us to fund our roads in that $7, $8 million range? And what should we be thinking about looking forward, given the fact that we can anticipate the revenue from motor vehicle fuel tax to continue to decline?
I think that's the, the whole decrease in local motor fuel taxes, even at the state level is going to have to be addressed related to either registration fees or things, things of that nature for electric vehicles. Now, the state motor fuel tax, there's, there's a lot of rules and reg, you know, regulations related to how we can use those. Those, those are in a separate fund, the Hambleton Street Bund, you know, the large intersections. So those are really not like street resurfacing dollars, but they are, they are roads. So sometimes it gets combined. The local motor, local motor fuel tax, 100% of that gets allocated to asphalt and concrete. And then, as I mentioned, 10% of the home rule sales tax gets allocated to asphalt and concrete. So we're, our home rule's going up, but hopefully it stays there. It doesn't come back down because of these changes that we've been experiencing, specifically the online retailer. But I don't think it's going to be enough to counteract the loss in local motor fuel tax. But I don't think it's going to dip precipitously, I can't say that word, from the 7 million, but it's going to come down a little bit. So we'll have to, you know, as we get into the budget season here, see what the home rule trend is, how much that's offsetting the local motor fuel tax. As of right now, we're looking at possibly a half million dollar reduction from that. What we used to see is, you know, $4.7 million in local motor fuel tax for the fourth, the eight cents, the total eight cents per gallon.
And, okay, and in prior budget books, that, when, when I'm looking at Bloomington adopted budget that shows the general fund balance at that hundred, 105 million dollar range, you're saying that that number and these other numbers would include state funding?
The, the, the state motor fuel tax is a different fund, so it's not in the general fund.
So I'm looking at the adopted budget 2018, but we can take this. I mean, I, we can talk about it separately. I just want to make sure I understand the trends there. And if we're going to find ourselves in a situation where we've created a funding structure for our roads that is going to be insufficient in paying for the repairs that we need on our roads.
Thank you. Councilmember Becker.
So I basically had the same question as Donna did, but I, I'm just going to ask it a different way. And it's not the question, it's maybe if you could portray it a little bit differently to make it clear down the road. If you look at, at your last column that you added, I love that column. It's really helpful, but let's say the original budget was 200, $200. And you say, okay, we reduced that by 50% because of the effects of COVID and we wanted to see, that means the budget's now $100. And guess what? We're 40% ahead. That's 140. It still doesn't make it really easy to see that we're 60, $60 behind. And I think that's the one place where this isn't really showing us. Yeah, it looks good this year, but we're really still $60 behind off of last year. Not even the prior year to last year where we know the budget was a little bit different too. I think it's, it could still be artificially positive, if, if that makes sense.
Sure. And, and I think we kind of, you know, we'll look at this exhibit, it's getting pretty big, but that, that's, I mean, I, I'm with you. I, I think it's a good data point because you have to take it in a proper context. You know, we're, we're significantly over, but what does that mean compared to where we started compared to the year before? Now, so we need to, I think I'll, you know, we can take a look at some of these columns and see, have we spoken about them in recent history? Maybe we can hide some and, and add a dollar value related to that reduction. And then you can get more of an apples to apples there.
Thank you, councilmember Crable. Last but not least.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Scott, for the presentation. Really appreciated getting that early. So I'm looking at it on my screen as well. Wanted to note on the prior year-to-date actuals versus our year-to-date actuals. And so I mean, it, it looks to me that in the first six months, we're actually, our expenditures are less than what they were last year. Am I reading that right? 52 million versus 53 million.
Phil, can you go to the, the next slide, please? Is the we had a is this the one that's online? Sorry to talk, but councilmember Crable, there was, there was an original report that I sent out and then I amended it.
Okay.
Okay.
Maybe, yeah, maybe I'm seeing the old report then. So how do our?
So the, the current, the, the report that Phil had up, it shows 52 million year-to-date versus 49.5 prior.
Prior, okay.
Yes, sir.
And then I had a question and it, it kind of ties into the, to the audit a little bit. Or the financial summary. So if I understand it right, we actually had a $2 million surplus in our water fund due to increased usage, decreased personnel expenditures and I guess an insurance reimbursement.
Yeah, and, and the enterprise funds really, I mean, the water fund hasn't had a fee increase in some time, but they're really designed to humiliate, I mean, the, the operations, if you net out pro, capital projects should be in excess so that we have dealt like sewer and storm, they incorporate, they adopted fee increases a couple of years ago to accommodate these capital projects. So if projects get bumped that, that were, were budgeted, you're going to see a net add to reserves. But that, those dollars are really dedicated for projects.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Scott.
Now she doesn't.
I was going to ask him privately, but in the back of my mind and in the audit, it talks about the pension deficit, pension funding deficit, and that that's something we really need to focus on. And I, I would like to have that conversation. Soon. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is city manager's discussion. City manager Gleason.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Phil, how many slides do I have? There we go. Small Business Saturday, shop small. This kicks off the holiday season. And it's downtown Bloomington, November 27th to December 3rd. Next slide, please. Once upon a holiday downtown Bloomington, this is the holiday tree lighting event. Look forward to that every year. Next slide. But it yep, first, it's our first Friday event. And then Vintage Holiday Christmas Parade is December 4th. Anything else, Phil? Two additional comments, just a reminder to the community, I know council is aware. December is for our council meetings, we don't follow the, we don't meet on the second, third and fourth Mondays. And we also do not have a committee of the whole in the month of December. We have council meetings with action items, the first and second Monday. So we will meet December 6th and December 13th. And then also wanted to share that we had our first indoor farmer's market, the Thanksgiving market. Melissa, Economic Community Development Director, shared that we had over 1,000 attendees. And also 28 vendors participated and sales did extremely well. And then lastly, from myself and from city staff to the community. As we kick off the holiday season with Thanksgiving this Thursday, we are so blessed as a community and have many things to be thankful for. And we wish everyone a blessed holiday season. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, city manager Gleason. On the mayor's discussion, just want to point out that on Thursday I was at the unveiling of the Route 66 Partlet, which was very nice. Collaboration between staff and the Mid Illinois Realtors Association. So those, you know, those benches have a, like an old school feel, you know, 1960s type, you know, might remind you of Happy Days. But if you do, I'm sure it's, it's, it's a little too cold now for photo opportunities, but you know, down the line, when it gets a little warmer, take advantage of that. Other thing that I, I wanted to, to mention that I, I do have my, my two siblings here. My brother Loa in the back and who is at E O V I and lives in Mohammed. And my sister Safi, who came from Switzerland to, to visit. So, which will make Thanksgiving a really, really fun time, lots of good food. So I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and we are indeed blessed as a community. And we need to remember that, you know, despite all of the, the difficulties that we might have, but you know, it's much better than other places. And at this point, I'll turn it over to council for council discussion. Okay, councilmember Matthew.
Thanks, Mayor. So I, it was said in public comment, just a reminder of do not put your leaves in the road, leave them up in the parkway. The crews are going through all the neighborhoods, taking care of leaves. And they do have a person out front that is raking stuff in the parkway out in the street so they can use the street vacuum and suck it up. The reason why we don't want in the streets, because we don't want them to get washed into the sewer every time it rains. So I know that's a frequent topic that comes up every year. Also, I would implore everybody that if you're going shopping, to try to shop with locally owned businesses because according to Small Business Administration, 68% of your spend stays in our community versus at a chain, then only 37% stays in our community. And of course, if you shop online, 0% stays in our community. So, and with that, just thank you and happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Councilmember Crable.
Thank you, Mayor. Just Thank you, Mayor. Just quickly, I want to give a shout out to our communications director, Catherine Murphy, for all the press releases she sends out. A lot of times I'll just cut and paste those into informing our residents of what's what's going on. So it's really, really beneficial. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other comments. Is there a motion to adjourn? We do not have any executive session.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, councilmember Boland, second by councilmember Becker. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.